Whatever you're ready.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started here. Got to catch my breath here. First of all, I want to apologize to the residents here in Brookridge for the way things have been happening the last few months. I'll start off by saying one thing that when we've seen a prime example of why there shouldn't be two people in the same household be on the board. We've seen examples of that time over time over the last couple of months. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going on in the community. This week we got a lot of rain. We had to move a cement slab that floated on Midmore, floated about four houses away from where it was supposed to be. And that was a small slab. It weighed probably about three hundred fifty, four hundred pounds. Couple of retention ponds like overflowed. We cleaned up some places on, most, all the places have been cleaned up. Some of the rocks have been put back. There's a place on Dennis, on Dennis Moore that's got a gully in it, but it's not the road. It's down the person's property line. Their rock was out in, out in the middle of the road. Uh, let's see. What we going, what we got going on here is we got one house that's had some bushes trimmed on it because they had mice in the, the houses. Like the person died in it years, like months ago or whatever. And we're taking care of the, the bushes and trying to get rid of the rats because it's on, how to, um, that's one thing. And then the bushes that are next to the sign out there, um, are being trimmed up or actually being removed. But they would be removed this week or next week. Then you're going to see a difference in the parking lot out here. They're going to start on it making the first row golf cart only between the, between the walkways. Let's see. There, we had an RV compound meeting last night and about twenty thirty, about forty people showed up and answered a lot of questions and gave out, I gave out one spot this morning and we moved, we moved one trailer, but I had permission to do that already. Um, trying to clean up that, that down there and organize it right. Um, let's see. Still working on the fence. Okay, tennis court's still being worked on. Um, let's see. I don't know of anything right now. Oh yeah, the budget, the budget vote has gone out. They got sent out Monday and Tuesday. Some people already turned their, turned their ballots in already. Uh, if they're looking for, I've got the slip in front of me. If they're looking for where it tells about the articles or the changes to the bylaws, they're underneath code enforcement on the white piece of paper. I mean, I'll show it right. It's underneath the white piece of paper right here for code enforcement at the top, but it shows how to vote for the, shows you how to vote for the articles, the changes in the bylaws. I'm certainly not going to tell you how to vote, but you know, that's on, that's on your own there. Um, let's see. Um, I will talk a little bit about budget. The audit, well, I'll talk about the budget first. Tom, about Larry, he said he had something he wanted to say about it.
Hi, everybody. Too late. Already did. Um, I'm just here to plug the budget. I hoped that it would pass. Uh, these rates are ten dollars as everybody knows. The biggest increase anywhere, um, whether it be facilities, public works, code enforcement, or, uh, the admin office is all in code enforcement. The biggest thing there is the wages. However, code enforcement has seventeen employees that are going to go from eight dollars and sixty seven cents to just over nine dollars, up to ten dollars, which we're paying now, which is not in the budget for this year. And then next October, they go to eleven dollars an hour. And there will be a total of nineteen employees next year that'll go to eleven. The other thing I did with the wages, and this ends up in Jerry's lap, I'm sorry, but uh, it's the finance committee's thoughts. If there's an employee here right now that is, that is making ten dollars and twenty cents an hour, he's probably been, that person's probably been here four or five years to get that high. Because everybody starts just about a minimum wage. So it's the finance committee's thoughts that, uh, if a person's making less than ten fifty an hour and now it gets raised up to ten dollars, that they shouldn't be, we should be able to give them a three percent raise. Now, that wouldn't go into effect until January of twenty-two, like I said, because there's nothing in the budget in twenty twenty-one, even for the ten dollar raise. But that's our, that, that was the finance committee's idea. And of course, Jerry has to sign off on that. And it's up to him. But you do see that there's roughly a hundred thousand dollars more in next year's budget for code enforcement or wages than what's in there this year. And it's because of the raise in pay, most of it. Not all of it, but most of it. We did put a little bit of extra in there in case we'd happen to have a hurricane next year that comes through. So you're going to have more people probably having to work. So we tried to add some in for that. But that is the biggest and probably the most important piece of the finance that we had to change. And that's why we did it. If you look through your, um, ballot, you'll see that most of the other items, other, all the other, uh, departments stayed the same or very close to the same. And even administrative went down, um, from last year. I do think if, if, uh, we, we did not put any money in the budget this year for bingo, we don't know if there's going to be bingo next year or not. I know bingo was figured for twenty twenty-one. Didn't happen. So that's roughly twenty, I'm not right, but I can say around twenty-two or twenty-five thousand dollars that was not collected, but it was in the budget. So it's going to be tight this year to get out above budget or above our expenses. And it's not because of overspending. The money that this board has spent is almost all out of the reserve funds. It's not out of, uh, the operating budget. But reserve funds won't pay for wages. Um, doesn't pay lawyer fees. It doesn't pay, the only thing the reserve fund is there for is to pay for like a new, um, mower for public works, a vehicle for code enforcement, uh, roof on this building, would have been the floor in this building. That's what reserve money is for. It's not to make the everyday, pay the everyday bills. That does not go that way. And I know we raised it to three dollars. We raised it to three dollars. I believe that if it had done properly, it wouldn't have to go on up three dollars for twenty twenty-two. I think that it should have been changed from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. But there's things that you just don't foresee that aren't going to happen. Like bingo, they didn't know they wouldn't have bingo this year. They figured that that would be over with in twenty twenty. So that money was figured. But, uh, as it worked out, it isn't going to happen. So... That's why we had to raise the rates up. And I would apologize to you, but that's the way it really goes. So I think next year, when it goes from, goes to eleven dollars for everybody next year at the end of the year, the following year it goes to twelve. And it's going to do that until it's fifteen bucks. And I don't know where your, uh, I don't know where our HOA fees will end up once everybody's making at least fifteen dollars a month. So... I hope everybody votes for the budget, but I don't know if they will. Beth?
I have a question.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Beverly Epstein. I have a question. At the meeting of the other morning, Larry mentioned some figures from the audit. And I didn't understand what they are or what they, how they affect our budget. Can somebody explain what the results of the audit?
Okay, I'm, I'm explaining to Beth as soon as Larry gets finished right there.
Oh, I'll let you have the floor, Jerry.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. Okay, what numbers I had, what I, what I told at the Tuesday morning meeting was seventy, let's see, I got it right, seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars worth of bad debt. Then I, then I said, I was going to tell the figure of, of course, a hundred and sixty thousand minus the need, need for the year. But let me go through this. Um, the reason that is says seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-seven bad debt is that, that's what they consider the foreclosures and stuff like that, they will not be collecting on. They mentioned something about, um, that some, she mentioned something about one year, that you can hang on to it for one year or something like that. But also, the difference is where it's saying seventy-six thousand, well, we as a homeowner association at the office only had nine thousand dollars as bad debt last year. So that was either, to me, that was either a clerical error or, um, just punching in figures wrong or something like that because that's just too much of a difference. She said that was, it was a way, it's only nine thousand dollars, uh, that somebody should have figured it being higher. Let's see, the other number I had is dealing with, um, the properties. I think there was a couple of properties sold. And, um, that was entered, that would be entered as a positive. And she says there might have been one double entry. So I'm thinking if it was a double entry, it's going to make, it's going to change, change this budget from being a negative one sixty to either a negative, well, if it goes, uh, either way, it's going to change it forty thousand dollars. You know, I really can't explain the rest of it as far as, um, let's see. There's one figure on here that shows, um, let's see, shows forty-one thousand dollars. I think I can explain that, that here. Soon as I make sure what it says. It says, um, resident activities, I believe.
Yeah, the forty-one thousand?
Yeah, member activities. It's, it's showing on this, I got it over here on the profit and loss state. And that is where we used to take care of the clubs' accounts at the office. And since she told me that was because of either they changed it from the EIN, you had to get your EIN numbers, and all that money go out, went out to the clubs for them to do just that. The clubs still have most of that money, but it's not handled by the office anymore. So that's where that forty-one thousand, one seventy-seven, zero, zero, zip. But what I see on this thing, somebody can disagree with me if they want, is I look at the, the profit and loss statement that I have over here, that's like for the last ten years, it's basically the same thing as, well, this is one year right here. And what I see on this thing is, um, that, um, I see from what was, if the bad debt is seventy-six thousand, and we had a net income of increase of, even if it was eighty-eight thousand, like you said, then the bad debt would make the eighty-six thousand down to twelve thousand dollars. And then we paid the reserves for the month of September was forty-three thousand. That would make us thirty thousand to the bad. So either way you look at it, it was not, not a eighty-five thousand dollar. I don't see how it can be talked back being one sixty minus to eighty-eight thousand plus. Um, I left it up to them to, they can ask the auditor questions. Uh, I'm not going to search some lines or stuff like that because the auditor made the changes, um, to it. And, um, one of the questions that came up was, you know, when you're questioning lines for two thousand twenty, why one line changed from, was twelve thousand, it changed to twenty thousand. Um, we know we're going to have, we're trying to get the order here, uh, between the twenty-first and twenty-ninth this month. I know some of that's weekend, but we're going to try to get him here during the week at, at two o'clock timeframe in the afternoon. And he said he would come anytime after the fifteenth, which is on a Friday. And we tried to get him to come on the board meeting on Wednesday night, but that's not a time they work. So it needs to be at two o'clock in the afternoon. And, he's not responding back yet. We just told him to give, we give, he wanted to ask for a couple of, a bunch of times and dates, see if he can make it. So he'll be able to answer those questions like where the money came, where the, where, why they moved it from what to what. Um... I mean, just my personal opinion of this thing is, um, I know that some of those, maybe some of those are planning to run for the board next year. I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't if I was them because it shows there was a lot more stakes done last year that you, we can't account for, that even maybe if it confused the, I don't want to say it confused the auditors, but for, for all this to go on, it just stunts me to know that when I seen the hundred and sixty thousand dollar minus, I'm like, like, I wasn't expecting that. So it's a shock to most people. And, uh, I think I've got one more copy up here if somebody wants a copy of, of the audit up here. Um, anybody's got any question about, about budget? Um, Gil's going to explain the amendments, uh, that were, that are in the budget that, uh...
I've got one question, Jerry.
All right, Quinn.
My question is simple. At the end of the year, December thirty-first, you've paid all your bills, you've collected all your money. How much cash do you have left in your hand? That's depreciation and bad debt. That's a thing for taxes. I want to know what we had for money so we could start twenty-two up.
Well, I'm, you know, as far as information goes, um, I can't answer that question.
How about Larry? Can you do it, Treasury?
No.
No, you can't, you can't, you can't answer that question because it's, it goes back to like, well, we could give you a figure, but if that's, to me, if we give you a figure saying what cash you had on end December thirty-first, if you have a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars worth of assessments that people paid for the, this year ahead of time, they paid it in December, it will show up on the December thirty-first books.
It should have an entry in there showing that that is twenty-two money, not twenty-one or twenty money. When you pay, when you collect for the following year, that should be off by itself. It's not for the year of twenty-one.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to explain that. And I'm going to let the, if you got any question about twenty twenty of last, I mean, last year, I'm going to let the auditor answer those questions when he shows up here on that. I'm not going to argue this no more about anything or try to speculate where it came from or nothing. I just know they got, they got the numbers, they got the figures. They were the ones that, that changed things in the computer. It wasn't nothing Lynn done or Carol did. It was what they did. So they're the ones that changed line numbers and, and, uh, what went into those numbers. I wish I could tell you more. I wish I could absolutely explain, explain it. But that P and L statement shows me that it's, um, it's on a correlation and it shows a hundred and sixty thousand thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cent minus. Says a neat, it says a net income was minus. And that's, that is the profit and loss statement. And that was dated, well, she ran it off on September thirtieth, but the date of this thing is January through December two thousand twenty. So it don't matter what was on there before that because it changes made. Some of this stuff goes back to, if we do it this year, then they put it on last year's. Because that's what they deal with that forty-three thousand dollar check that I wrote.
Larry. Larry, that's why we want the auditor to come here.
That's right.
And talk to us all, you know, so there's no guessing, you know? Yeah. Right. Yeah, that's why we want the auditor to come here to tell us all what it really is, instead of us guessing it. Right.
That's correct. So he, he's saying a bad debt is for last year's seventy, seventy-six thousand dollars. He's also saying depreciation is sixty thousand. I can explain sixty thousand is because when things depreciate out, like this building, okay, half, it's only scheduled like thirty years. Well, sometime during the middle of that, you change auditors and they don't give you the paperwork or give you the schedule that they, that it's supposed to give, then the standard number is sixty thousand dollars. And the reason I can say that it's got to be done more than once is because this piece of paper I have, let's see if I can find it. Okay, right here. This is the P and L statement for every year, for every year. And the reason I know it's, they've got to be standard thing is because they've got the depreciation number on it. Depreciation figure, okay, ten years ago, eighty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-four. Okay, nine years ago, eighty-four thousand sixteen. And it's ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-three, ninety, ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight, ninety thousand four hundred and sixty-two. Then it goes to sixty thousand two seventy-six. It goes to seventy-seven thousand two twenty. Then it's one, two, three, well, two years, which would be eighteen and nineteen. It was sixty thousand dollars in eighteen and sixty thousand dollars in nineteen. And according to, according to the books, that before these figures were put in there, the depreciation was only thirty-five thousand dollars for last year. So that number's low. So I'm not going to speculate on how they got that thirty-five thousand because it was sixty thousand two years in a row. And then all the other numbers are even higher than that. So did they run out of depreciation? I don't know. But, but to say depreciation is a profit or it's not a, not a loss, that I've heard somebody say that they're out of their mind. Because depreciation is a loss. So, got any more question about it? Like I said, it can go on. I can go on about this. And I may be wrong because I admit I'm wrong. I'm going to let the accountants give the answer to this. When Percy comes in here, whether it be the twenty-first or whatever day, um, people can argue with anybody because all I know is I got this, I got a figure right here of the budget of the audit draft. And the one over there, they're both saying the same thing, a hundred and sixty short. So, yeah, that's the argument with any of where it came from.
Can any of these questions be asked to the old board, even though they're still on the board, to answer to some of these questions? Or is it better off going through the auditor?
Well, the probably the best thing to do, I'd wait till, take, wait till the auditor comes and explains why. Because, you know, one thing is they're saying that when I asked them about bad debt, they're saying in our system that our numbers show nine thousand dollars. Their system, what they're saying, it should have been way higher than that. That's all I give, that's all she can give me. Anybody else got any question about it? Okay. All right, Gil's going to explain the, the articles down our bylaw changes.
Thanks, Jerry. Can you hear me okay with my mask on?
Okay.
Uh, and the reason I'm, I'm giving you the information, because we are going to talk about, about the board, the next board meeting. But the reason I'm giving you the information now is that the, uh, ballots are already out there. Uh, so there are three bylaw amendments. And the first bylaw amendment is to ensure no residents on the same household, no matter how many lots they own, can serve at the, on the board at the same time. That was a recommendation by the nominating committee because they felt that, you know, everybody gets one vote in a household. And there was a lot of people that agreed, so we decided to put it on the ballot. The second bylaw amendment takes the CEO position away from the president. What this will do is to ensure that some matters cannot be decided by just one person. And I'll explain everything after. The third bylaw amendment just changes the appointment of the nominating committee from December to October. And that is because last year there was so many problems because they only had like seven days to do all of the, because what they have to do is they have to review each, each resume. They have to check to see if they are in arrears, uh, and if they, and that is you have to be up to date with all of your payments. You can't have any fines. And you can't be a criminal. So that's, that's all the things that we have. Okay. Now, the reason why, and that was by the nominating committee also, because they needed, they could have used an extra couple of weeks. Now, the reason why we, these have been brought up, our bylaws have been in effect for twenty-some odd years. Never had any problems before, but sometimes you have issues. Uh, and, uh, so that is the reason why we have to make the changes to make sure that there are no more issues in that. Anybody has any questions? I'll be happy to answer them. But I've heard, I heard at the meeting the other day that there is so much contention on the board that some people aren't going to vote for anything. Well, whoever's hearing me and whoever is here, you're not giving the money to the, to the board of directors. This is, this is to run your community. We're all members of this community. So if you go against these things simply because you don't like what's going on in the board, then where does that put you? You know, we have to look for the good of the community.
Jerry, got a couple of questions on, on here, um, from a previous, uh, segment. Um, has the auditor, this is from James Bennett. Uh, has the auditor qualified the year-end audit as a true presentation of the BCPO's finances?
My understanding is that if there's only one change... My understanding is that if there's only one change, it's gonna be for, for that property, which is, which is one of the properties, they thinking it's made double entry, and that was forty thousand dollars, so, and that was probably a reversal for the Hofstra's house, because originally it was sold for X number of dollars, and then part of it was given back to the Hofstra's, and then the rest of it's been held by the bank, because it was only like seven thousand dollars held to it. Uh, I think that was for our foreclosure procedures and any fines and liens and that kind of stuff.
And, um, also, did, did the audit show that we're, that it, that it did not balance in twenty-twenty, and said we, we're, we're in the red? And also, what did a twenty-nineteen, twenty-nineteen audit show?
Okay, I think, only thing I can say about, about, I know that when you look at it close, it's not that they, the department service spent last month, last year, it's like, when you look at what was spent per department, they actually spent a little under budget, it was just, to me, it was just the mistakes made with the foreclosure, the handling and stuff, and dating entries, and when it comes to that bad debt and that nine thousand dollars being what's on there. Um, the depreciation number was not going, it's not gonna change none. Um, I don't think the, what money went to the clubs, like member activities, that's where they get to get, I imagine it's had to where they had to get through I N numbers and all that, that was money not, it come out of that, it comes out of her account, but it's still, you know, now it's in the club's hands. So that's, but, that's the best way to explain that. Um, to give a more detailed answer of where those came from, like the seventy-six thousand versus nine thousand, that'd be something that the auditors have to answer, because I don't, because I can't tell you that. So, I don't know if that'll help them or not.
Uh, sort of, thanks.
But, um, but anyway, as...
Any other one with the, the, the other person that was answering, asking questions on here was Jerry Craft, uh, that was, she was asking about the twenty and twenty-one budgets.
Okay. Well, um, like I said, this profit, this profit and loss statement, it feels printed out before the audit came, which is, I actually have it, I think. It would, it would show that eighty-eight thousand to the good, it would show, um, it would show that, but it would not show the bad debt, because the bad debt, the bad debt according to it was zero. So, you know, that's something they have, that's something he has to answer, he'll have to answer that question for them. Um, was it right to give this out ahead of time? Well, when she said it was only gonna change forty thousand dollars, that's what Lynn thought, but the auditor's not said whether it's gonna change or not, so, um, um, so I can't, you know, I can't answer that question. I just go by what I see in paperwork, so I'm not, can't speculate on that. Any more questions, they have any more?
Nope.
Okay.
Does anyone understand that what the bad debt is? I mean, is it, does people out there think that, um, we owe money to people, or is it money owed to us?
Makes money owed to us what it is, that we may not, never get, or it could be twenty years from now, or that kind of thing. It's not like, um, um, like I said, it could be, that it be twenty years from now that you get it, it's not gonna get it now. Um, I know, let's see, let me see what the bad debt figures have been forty years ago. Okay, bad debt figures for the years. Okay, one year the bad debt figure was six, six thousand, seven hundred, one year it was twenty-two thousand, one year twenty-four, one year forty-eight, another year forty-seven, another year eight thousand, another year thirteen thousand, another, another one twenty-seven thousand, and another year twenty thousand. And last year it's showing zero on my, on my report. Um, but it also shows that, whether I go by the audit, or whether I go by this, it does not show, it shows only thirty-five thousand for depreciation. Well, Masters, of course, did not give us the information, and I got, I finally got proof that it was over with, that, I got it right in front of me. Um, it's a letter that we sent out September sixteenth, and it finally came back last week. It was them trying, well, it was, we offered to pay them fifty percent down, to try to get the, try to get some kind of schedule, and we'd pay them fifty percent down, and fifty percent was over with. But, um, you know, they gave the accountants this year very little information, because they're the ones that walked away from this thing, not wanting to do it, saying they had a debt in it and their, everything, so we had to hurry and get an accountant. So, they sent the information to them, and Masters sent them what they could for, I guess, starting figure for, you know, two thousand nineteen. So, um, you know, it's based on their information, like I said, um, that's why I don't really wanna talk much about this, because it's like, um, you, you don't know what to do, and I wasn't here, so I don't know why houses were sold, or properties, or how they handled the, the first of last year, um, how they were entered in there. I just know that, that, to me, I just know what most people know, is when Roger O and Amy were let go, that four months, or three months, they did not have any, have a G M or bookkeeper, and then certain ones were behind the computers, because I know they were, because employees saw them, so, didn't know what they was doing, did not know what they was doing, you know, was there mistakes made there, was mistakes made by Lynn, was mistakes made by Roger O? There's no telling. I, I just wanna move on, I know it's in, in the red, or, yeah, in a deficit, or if it ain't a deficit, it's gonna be real close, um, because I'm looking at this thing like, okay, I see, we, see we have no bingo till right now, till they start up in about, what, two weeks or a week, um, for the whole year, we know minimum wage is going up, um, we know there's missed lanes in come, um, that, I don't know where that's coming from. Um, I will say this, that once I was, I was elected, just, you know, I'm not a politician, so I'll show you the numbers and let you look at them, and you decide for yourself, um, what you wanna believe, what you don't wanna believe. Um, but one thing you get when maybe is, is I'm not gonna tell you something unless I see it in, see it in writing. Um, and that's all, that's basically the way it is. Um, you know, I'm not gonna tell you this, I'm not gonna stand up and sit here and tell you, oh, we're eighty-eight thousand dollars over, or a hundred thousand dollars over, not be on a piece of paper, I mean, or not figured somewhere. Like, I look at that figure, and it shows, um, you know, it shows eighty-eight thousand, one hundred, one dollars and seven cents, but I also know it's not including, it's not including a bad debt, and the, uh, the month of September, we didn't pay the reserves. So that's what I'm saying, it's not got even one of those on it. So, that's why I think that it was real, if it was real close, or was it under? To me, they're saying it's under. Well, I'm saying for us this year, I can tell you that, as far as bad debt goes for us, we're probably got twenty thousand dollars worth of bad debt already. And that was because I signed papers on the house, that foreclosure, that was twelve thousand dollars, one was four, and one was less than a thousand, and the other one was less than a thousand. So, if that's not collected, then that's gonna be bad debt. So that's gonna be a twenty, that's gonna be twenty thousand dollars on me, on us already for this year, and that's not counting, that's not counting any, anything else. I mean, um, as far as, uh, any other kind of debt goes. So, I'll admit to that, I mean, hey, we don't collect it, it'll be a bad debt. So, anybody got any other question? Yeah?
Sandy Combs, can you answer the question of, um, the people that were in the office on the computers, were they employees, or were they residents?
Uh, they, they were, part of them were employees, and part of them were, were residents.
And were not allowed to be in the office on the computers? Thank you.
That's correct. So, um, let's see.
Hey, Jerry, I've got one being, we've got Larry here. Larry, have we made our final H O A, our final reserve payment for the year, and are we current with our reserve payments for this year?
We are current, yes. Um, is there one yet to go? I think there's one month yet to pay.
Okay.
I think there's one month, there's always that to pay.
Okay, by the way, I'm reading this report, it shows that they had only paid four hundred and one thousand and some change on that. They used their reserve payment in order to subsidize our general bookkeeping. Is that a legal way to do business?
Well, that's something I have to ask the manager, from my point of view, that I would say that would be totally unethical, for one thing. I think it should have been paid like in September, like talking about missing, I got the report right here, um, that shows when payments were made, and, let's see, the reserve payments for last year, they made one, two, three, four, five, six. Let's see if I'm reading right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, let's see what the dates were on those. Uh, they made one of January the third, um, see, another deposit was made on, uh, let's see, that's May thirteenth, and was made on, uh, June sixth, and was made on July thirteenth, and was made on eight seventeen twenty, and then the, and they had one made on eleven sixteen, two thousand twenty, there was one made on, here's one, here's the one for March, um, there's one for February, which is February the sixth, and there's one for April, yeah, April third. So, you're missing the one for, well, you're missing the one for September, that's correct, so that's the one I made. But, yeah, they didn't make them, well, they did make them every month, but it was never the same date, so it was like, one was on the third, one was on the thirteenth, eighth, thirteenth, seventeenth, sixteenth, eleventh, third, and sixth. So it was never the same one, never the same time.
I think we can safely say that they were mistakes made last year. Um, one of the, one of the mistakes was get, taking the proceeds from one of the homes, and we've always, in the past, the money from the homes are never put in the budget, uh, and always goes in the reserves, it's never put in there before the, before the audit is done. And last year, when they were questioned quite a few times, and I questioned them too, and they said, they got permission from the auditor to do that? You can't do that, because you don't know if you're going to need that, you know, if that money has to go back, and in one of the cases of one of the two homes, is that the money had to go back, had to be taken back from, from, from the reserves. So, that's, we know mistakes are made. I think what Jerry is trying to do is, he's making it very clear right now, and after the audit, auditor explains it, that he's making it clear that there were mistakes made, and, and what we wanna do is, is move on from there, you know? But Jerry's making it pretty clear.
Well, we shouldn't have been told one, honestly, we should not have been told one thing. Uh, I won't tell you, like, I won't go to the end of this year and say, oh, we're in the positive, so much money, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say, I think we're gonna be in, we're gonna be in negative this year. I mean, you know, that's a hard pill to swallow, but that's the truth. Um, if we're, if we're not in the red, and I'd be doing the same thing, I'd question, I'd be wanting to know why, not just, not just basically accepting it, so, um, um, but it's really hard to go back and look and see what, you know, what was done in the four months of, they had no bookkeeper or anything like that. So, um, you know, it's kinda dis, kinda disheartening when you see that, that's a hundred and sixty thousand, and you wonder, you wonder my complicated matters this year, or I'm making it go bigger, because we're doing stuff like fixing the roof, you know, buying, buying a Toyota and things like that? Makes me wonder about that, too, because I used, I'm not used to seeing, seeing numbers so drastic like that, so. And, uh, just so anybody else knows that, you know, I, I basically see the day-to-day operations around here, and, um, always trying to answer questions and things like that, uh, I may not get whole procedures right that goes on around here, like, you know, certain things have to be done a certain way at a, at a board meeting to like, like say, clubs, and I'll say, I admit to the R S L things, but I mean, I'm more focused on, I hate to say it, I'm more focused on like day-to-day stuff, I'm wanting to make sure people get up, people get in, outside, get through the gate, that doing landscaping, or I'm worried about the ponds overflowing when it rains for hard, or, uh, if people got spotting RV compound, um, I'm wanting to make sure they're happy and they got a spot, and try to eliminate the waiting list, um, things like that, I wanna keep you informed as much I can on this. I had a conversation with a person wanting to be like a possibility running for the board, and I said, I said, look, you know, things, as you fix things, things get easier to do. And so, this is not gonna be complicated next year, because you got stuff that like, the only thing I see we have to spend money on next year is probably fixing the pool out there, where the crack is underneath the filter. It's about what I, only thing I see, and probably, um, let's see, let me look at this, the reserve study, it shows it, I'm pretty sure it shows the truck, I mean, it shows the vehicle, code enforcement. I buy that thing at the first of the year, and then be under maintenance or warranty all year long, and wouldn't have to worry about it so much, and then the rest of the year, just focus on things like, like procedures of getting things done right, like, like...
Do you think they're not due for this code enforcement vehicle?
I don't, I don't know exactly when they're due yet to come in, but I know they're gonna have the, uh, just code enforcement on it, there won't be no shield on there, there won't, that shield will be taken off the car, the car and everything, too. Um, and I don't, trust me, I don't forget, I don't, do not forget things. I even reminded Billy of something today that was like, promised to do like four months ago, so, I don't, I do remember.
He doesn't forget.
That stuff, so I'm always looking for that, and I've been out to the guard shack already, because remember we fixed the floor in the guard shack, and took the wet, stinky carpet out, put down that waterproof laminate, went out there to make sure the cement had been fixed where it goes between the doors, because it was unlevel, and, uh, somebody said... And, uh, somebody said, well, I thought you got about, forgot about that. I didn't forget about that, that's four months ago. So, uh, the thing you gotta realize is, is that, is that I try to stay on top of all this stuff. If I forget something, um, like, uh, when people tell me they got a problem somewhere, I try to take care of it right then if I can. And if I don't, get to you within like a, a week, just tell me, just come to me and tell me because I can't do everything myself or the way it seems like or like there's something that I gotta take care of. But if there's any other question?
I just, I, I'll go over there. I just wanted to say something, uh, when, when you mentioned Jerry that there was no bookkeeper or GM for, for three or four months, that doesn't give anybody a buy because you still have to run the business.
That's right. That's correct. You still gotta, you still gotta run it. I think what probably what should have been done was, was really and truly if they had a problem there or was thinking about something to do, they probably should have found somebody or a temporary agency or somewhere to get somebody in there that does this stuff for a living, even if it was just temporary to get them until they found somebody. You just don't outright fire somebody without having somebody to back it up or some plan in place to take care of it. Like I know that if something happened here with majority of the employees, we have a backup plan to like the fill-in or like say if all of a sudden, well, say if something happened to Carolyn Lynn, there is a backup. There's a, I guess YH agency is one of them you can go to. Uh, and there's, there was, there is a backup plan. So if something happened, if somebody's not quite doing right, of course you're going to run them up, you give them, you talk to them like we've talked to them, talk to people here in general about things, that there is a plan in place. But I don't see that with the employees to like go to the extreme and just say, boom, you're gone because really blatantly none of these boys have done anything that like, you know, unless they hit somebody or something like that, you know, there's really no reason to, reason to get rid of them unless they blatantly don't want to do, do things or, uh, you know, I'm not going to hold them accountable for the, uh, the mask mandate. I mean, I put it, we put it in place, but if, uh, I'm not going, not expecting them to tell everybody like if there's a social dance or there's a, um, brokerage entertainment, if people come in here and they don't wear a mask, mask, you know, if there's other people aside them, I don't intend to be the bad guy for everything. I put it up there, we put signs up there and if people don't want to eat that, heat it, then, you know, can't blame the employees for that. They can try, but, you know, it's really on themselves.
Mr., Mr. Bennett's got a question. Um, he says, uh, that house that was taken from a couple, how much will that cost brokerage?
Okay.
And is it settled now?
Okay, it must be the house, house right now, I don't know what that's going to be because, uh, it's in litigation still. And I don't really know, um, don't really, well, you gotta have some kind of damage. So it's gotta be like how much if they're going to sell it, they have to still make a lot of decisions on it, whether they're going to sell it, keep it, um, how much Miller's owed to take, owe them because they took all the stuff out of it. And that's what I think, that's not been, that's not been determined yet. So you can't really give a definite answer on that. But we know what's out there, well, where it was out there. And the same way with a couple of other ones too.
Okay, I have two quick questions. Um, the mask mandate, has that been changed yet? We talked about it.
Um, let's see, probably not. I will tell you what it is today. Somebody asked me that question about, uh, what website I use. And that's the CDC, CDC mask guidelines. And that's what I key in, it says, the website is cdc.gov. And it says your guide to mask and it says CDC side it to the right. You click on that and it says Centers for Disease Control and you scroll down and then where it's underlined is substantial or high transmission, click that. And another screen comes up and says COVID data tracker. And then you go down, scroll down about halfway down and then it says state or territory. I click on that. And I put in Florida. Now I put on the county, which is Rockaway. I scroll down to the county and Hernando County. Click on that. Now it gives a circle, turns it back up. And then the screen says today is cases are three hundred seventy-five, positivity rate is nine point four percent. The deaths are twenty-three, the elderly population is fully and vaccinated is not, is fifty-four percent, fifty-four point four percent, new hospitalizations forty-eight. And it says the county transmission rate according to them is high. So it will not change unless it goes down, it'd have to go down to five percent and then it'll have to stay that way for what we say a week. Okay? Um, before it will change, change again. I will say from, we are not an exception to the rule, um, exception of that. Let's see, I'll, I'll tell you some examples because I know that, I know it comes up. Let's see.
Are you, are you using the COVID data tracker? Is that what you're?
I'm using the CDC website. I'm not using, I'm not using COVID now if you, if you got that, if that's what.
I'm using CDC, uh, COVID dat- data tracker.
Yeah.
That's what it says on my phone.
Okay, I'm going to key in my state, these, I live there with North Carolina. Then I'll key in South County because that was the county I grew up in. Just to tell you some comparison, comparison to that. Okay, my county, South County, which the county seats wants to sail in North Carolina. And it says it's a high transmission county and it says for today, there's nine hundred twelve cases, positivity rate is eight point six one, the deaths are sixteen, the elderly population that's fully vaccinated is sixty-two percent and new hospitalizations is twenty-nine. And it says county transmission is high. So we're not the only ones that have high transmission rate. And I'll see, that was North Carolina. Let's see what South Carolina was. I think it's even higher. okay, South Carolina, there's a county we live in where Marl Beach was it. Okay, the rate for that county is, it's high transmission rate and the cases are one thousand seven, the positivity rate is nine point eight six and deaths are twenty-four and elderly population that's fully vaccinated is fifty-five percent and new hospitalizations is sixty-nine. So we're not u- unique to this. It's not like we're the only county, uh, is that way. And I'm sure if we were still living in Marl Beach, I'm sure the hospitals and, I mean, not hospitals, I'm sure some, most of the restaurants would not, you know, be open, so, so that's just, that's just to show you that this is not, we're not exception.
No, no, Jerry, I, I'm in the CDC, is it Centers for, I'm just wondering if I'm in the right one. Centers for Disease Control and Ventures has COVID data tracker, is that what you're looking at?
Hmm, let's see.
I think I have one more question, too, though.
Yeah, COVID data tracker, yeah.
We still have that question.
Okay.
My second question was, is can we do anything about the beer truck racing down Country Club?
Will we stop it and we give them a dollar for a beer?
We're going to have to do something, we're going to take over the truck.
Okay. He's getting beer delivered, that's what I like to know.
Throw it up.
Oh, okay.
I'd say we take the beer truck hostage. I volunteer to be the first.
How many food trucks?
Yeah, I think we'll have a food truck out here and a beer truck out at the same time.
Have the computers been updated?
Yes, the computers have been up, well, I'll take that back. We've got new computers, we've had very little problem with them whatsoever. So we have cut back from the plan that we had, which was five hundred ninety-five dollars was the, was the computer consultant plan. So it's being cut back to either a lower one or by the hour. So, uh, they're really not, they were surprised that access was between the guard shack and the administrative, they're surprised that it's taking the information. So, um, if it acts up, cause I asked them about it, is that we, we still got to, uh, it goes on, we have to keep going down the road trying to find a program or how to work it out like, um, um, before when we talked about kick century, which I, which I wasn't going to do, but, um, something like that. So right now it's working as far as I know.
Can the admin, talk to the, uh, guard shack? Keep them up to date?
Yeah.
I think it's working right now.
Yeah, I think it's working right now, yeah.
Good.
Maybe we should get an update on that.
And I'll, I'll look into that and make sure, I asked about it, let's see, one day this week, if those have any problems. And Carl told me no, that they were thinking about, they were going to cut it back. I just, what if they need to work on something by that hourly or something. So, anybody else got any question about anything? Okay, I try to answer everything. Like I said, these things, these meetings are, are not to like, you know, give around a reason or whatever, saying I do things or what reason I got behind it is basically, um, I just, a lot of it's what I want to do with like import, like say people live here, if they got a question about something like they live in a certain area, like for example is, her sitting on the third row, she was talking about the line on Country Club and I got with some other people too, and they thought it was a good idea to repaint that strip. So we did that strip. So that's the way, that's basically the way I do things here. It's not like something I want to do, like, you know, I'll be honest with you about the mask mandate. I'm not for wearing a mask because I've got like the vaccines and stuff, but so many more people has come to me and said that they're glad that we have the mask mandate in place because they know so many people have had the vaccine and got, got COVID and, um, living here, that, that rate has gone up right much. Um, so, um, you know, that's, that's why I'm here. Because what, you know, if it was me personally, I'd say no, but, you know, we gotta go, we gotta do what's right. Even if it's not what I want, it's got to be done what's right with the majority of the people. So just like his budget vote, yeah, he should be voting on, it should be, people should vote for this three dollars because that's what needed to make the payroll and they should be, they should want the employees to get paid, not lose their job or not get their hours cut back. And you can't have it both ways. You can't keep it the same way, the pay the same way, um, payroll, I mean, the assessment same and expect the employees to somehow we make it up, it's not possible to make up that amount of money. So, um, um, anyway, that's all I got for the day. I know Vince has to leave, so I appreciate everybody.
Jerry, I just have,
Yeah.
Um, after the meeting the other day and during the meeting, there was comments made about me running the show. Jerry and I talked about that last week after the meeting and after the Wednesday night meeting, we talked about it a few days later. And, you know, I want to tell everyone and people at home, Jerry is doing the best job that I have seen any, uh, president do. He, he is dedicated to Brookridge. He is not a one-sided man. He's going to look at both sides. And with the, and I'm going to call it heckling, with the heckling that goes on, I am going to help him as, he asked me as his first vice president to help him. I am not running the, the, the show because he is running the meeting. He's trying to get that agenda done, he's trying to stay focused and I don't think that the people in the audience should be heckling anybody because this man has done above and beyond for every single person in Brookridge. And I just.
I appreciate that. You know, I try not, I don't worry about that much. I don't need the applause or anything. It just, just I know that we want things done right and we want things to be done fair. So I appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.